Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 20th Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, we have citizens input. Seven oh five Barney Overroot Industrial Development Financing Authority. Reappointment of Barney Overroot to the Industrial Development Financing Authority for terms starting four one two thousand and eighteen with an expiration of four one two thousand and twenty three. Seven fifteen, public hearing with Animal Control Officer Sue Libido. Seven thirty, discussion, possible action, town law articles and proposed FY nineteen budget. Eight o'clock, approve amendment to police chief contract. Eight ten, selectmen's update. Eight twenty, town manager's update. Eight thirty, assistant town manager's update. We have a bunch of action items. And approximately eight fifty, we'll go into executive session to discuss strategy relative to collective bargaining firefighter negotiations. And then to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations for contract renewal, non-union personnel, finance director Randy Scollins. Bill, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge begins to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Being just after seven o'clock, is anybody here for this incident? But please step up.
Yeah, you can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Heather Harding, fourteen Oak High Street. So I'm just here tonight to give you guys a quick update on the open space plan. Some of you probably remember that back in two thousand and eleven, we filed the open space plan with the state. And at that time, we formed a committee that would continue to work on the plan because an update is due on the plan every seven years. So now it's two thousand and eighteen and our update is due. So that group has been getting together, you know, the past seven years, and we're getting ready to compile it all. Two of the things that we wanted to do were have a public forum and redo the survey that we did back in two thousand and eleven. So we have set up a public forum for next Tuesday, the twentieth, at seven P. M. in this room, because it's the off night, you guys aren't going to be in here. And that's going to, it's going to be very informal. We have a slideshow that we'll go through quickly to show people that may not know what the plan is, what it does, what the updates are. But it's really going to be interactive. We want citizens to come that either have input in the plan or want to learn about it, anything, you know. It's going to be brief. We don't hope people for that long. And the second thing is, we have reposted the survey that we did back in two thousand and eleven. At that time, we got about four hundred responses, maybe. But we're hoping to get a lot more this time. And in fact, we already have probably five hundred. It is posted on the Conservation Commission website. It's posted on the Recreation website. I think, Amanda, you just got an email from Jane, and it's going to go on the town main website as well, right? And then there are paper copies here at the town hall, or people can go to the senior center if, you know, if they need help and want to do it online or whatever. So, and then once that's done, we'll compile it all and we'll submit the update. For anybody that doesn't remember, doesn't know, the open space plan, we first did it in two thousand and eleven, and really, it's a way for Foxborough to take control of future growth while still preserving the resources, you know, of our community. That's why we want the public input. There's a lot of questions on there about what would you like to see, what wouldn't you like to see? There's actually two surveys now that we're asking people to do if they're willing. The original survey from two thousand and eleven, it's the same survey so that we can compare it. But we realized there were a couple of things we didn't think we focused on enough. Hunting and fishing, disability access. So we've come up with a couple of additional questions that we've kind of done, a supplemental survey. So if you go on, you'll see two that you can click on. We're asking people to take them both. And then when that gets all done and the results are tallied, we'll share them with everybody. We'll put them in the plan. The plan will be submitted. The biggest thing the plan allows us to do is to apply for grants. So the plan is put together jointly by the Conservation and the Recreation Departments. And once it's filed with the state, then you can apply for grants. If you don't have it on file, you can't apply for any. So that was really, you know, why we got it done in two thousand and eleven, and it is a working document, so we're required to update it every eight years. So that's what we're here doing. I'm just asking people, anybody who's interested to come to the public forum here next Tuesday, and if they have a couple of minutes to go online or pop up to the town hall and fill out the surveys for us.
Do you have a deadline when the surveys are due?
It's, no, no. The surveys will be open for a while. We have till the end of the year to submit the plan, so we're going to leave it up there for a while. We put something in the paper. We've been kind of spreading the word on Facebook, and we're going to leave it up there for a few months. We really want to get as many responses as we can.
Okay. And what time next Tuesday?
Seven o'clock, right here.
Is that going to be televised or just an informal meeting?
I don't think, we did ask if FCA could tape it for us, if they had someone, so that we could maybe replay it on cable for people to see it. Lauren was going to try to work that out. I don't know if she did or not. I don't think it'll be televised live, but we might be able to get it taped and replayed.
How many people are on the committee that compose the questions?
The initial, the initial core group was about five people, but over the year, like that were appointed and that are on the committee, but over the years, we're probably now up to like a dozen, at least a dozen people that come to the meetings on a regular basis.
And are they from other, like, is it someone from Conservation, someone from Rec., or they just volunteers, not associated with the group?
Well, both. Like, the, you know, the people that are always here are someone from Conservation, someone from Recreation, someone from Planning. But now we have, you know, different groups that have stepped forward. Like, we have a couple of people come that represent the hunting and fishing and that kind of thing. We have a woman who comes that represents the ADA stuff. So people that think they have something to contribute. And then there's just some citizens that say, hey, like, you know, this is of interest to me, how can I help?
So when you take the survey nameless, ageless?
Yes. At the end, it is optional. It's optional at the end. You can check off your age.
Yeah.
And they, we do ask that you put your zip code, because we really don't have a way, I mean, it's kind of based on the honor system. Someone from another town could come and take our survey. I don't, I don't really know why they would, but, so we do ask them to put their zip code in so that if someone from another town does come and ta, you know, maybe they work in town, but they live somewhere else or whatever. We do know that, but it's optional. They don't, they don't have to. They can just go through and answer the questions anonymously.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Well, after seven oh five, reappointment of Barney Overroot to the Industrial Development Financing Authority for terms starting four one two thousand and eighteen with an expiration of four one two thousand and twenty three.
This one's going to be treated as an action item, Mr. Jim, because, I guess, in the sense that we don't want it to be treated as a, as an agenda item or something like this. Barney's actually out of town, unfortunately, for tonight, so, but if there was any questions, I think everybody understands and knows the background of Barney Overroot and his, and his ability to contribute to the community in this, in this capacity, because it's capacity.
Questions from the board?
No.
Motion?
Yep. Move to approve the reappointment of Barnett Overroot to the Industrial Development Financing Authority for terms starting four one two thousand and eighteen with an expiration of four one two thousand and twenty three.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Congratulations, Barney. A little ahead of schedule. Let's take a couple of action items.
Move to approve, what am I going to word that? Move to approve the name roadway Crocker Way submitted by Bay Colony Group Briarwood Construction Inc., London Estates, Faves Two.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve public event application from the Norfolk Associates for Children, five K road race, four twenty nine eighteen, from nine A. M. to twelve P. M.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
I'm just, I know it used to be on some of the applications, but I just want to make sure that there's a note that's saying they should remove all signs after the race. I think it might be in the application, but just in case it isn't.
We can do that. Make sure we can do that.
Motion made, second. It's been noted about the removal of the signs. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of a hundred and five dollars from book sales to the Foxborough Historic Commission.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of twenty dollars to the Foxborough Council on Aging in memory of Ray Mosher from Tim Farmer.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of one hundred dollars to the Foxborough Council on Aging for programs and services at the Senior Center from John Fuller.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift, gift donation in the amount of forty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents to the Boydin Library for a step stool at the Boydin Library from the Friends of Boydin Library Foundation.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye. We'll take these separately. Move to approve the two sixteen eighteen Board of Selectmen's minutes.
Two six.
Two six eighteen, sorry.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye. And move to approve the two twenty eighteen Board of Selectmen's minutes.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
We jump to approve the amendment to police chief contract. Bill, if you don't mind?
Sure. So this is a, an amendment to an existing provision within the chief's contract that allows him the ability to not receive payment for doing overtime details at the stadium. Instead, what he's asked for is a, a stipend that would be treated as a housing stipend for, for doing that work. That work is, of course, in, on and above the work that he normally performs as police chief. He's, he asked for this amount be, be increased. Thus last year, it was, he estimated originally it to be about eighteen hundred dollars a month. It's now, he's been, he's asked to be increased to twenty-one hundred dollars a month based on the actual out, number of hours he actually spent at the stadium doing, performing the work. One other question that was raised by the board, this was discussed by the board to, to make sure that there was no concerns over whether or not this is a pensionable item. It is not. We have an opinion by the Norfolk County, Norfolk County Retirement Board into that effect. And the wording that has been proposed is consistent with what has been approved by the, by the, by the Norfolk County Pension Board. So I just wanted to make that clear so that everybody's aware of that. And at this point, the board, I think, was comfortable following that determination. So it's really up to you, Mr. Chairman, if there's a motion to approve.
I just, I, I put it as a agenda item versus an action item in case anybody, had any other questions. So, anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Have a motion?
Move to approve the amendment to police chief's contract.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. We can close it off. Do the seven fifteen.
Couple minutes, it'll be all right. I think it'll be all right. Mr. Chairman, just for the board's edification and understanding, I actually had town council appear for this item tonight, dealing with a, with a dog hearing. Oftentimes, when we do these hearings, there's always a legal question that comes up, so we want to make sure that we have the right resources here at the table, and so it didn't hamper the, the ability of the board to act tonight or to take any actions, and that Kate Conley is here from town council to, to advise the board accordingly.
The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven fifteen P. M. in the Gala Meeting Room, forty South Street, Foxborough, Mass., in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, to determine whether the dog owned by Lisa and Mark Brennan, seven Meadowview Road, Foxborough, Mass., is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog, and based on findings, may make such an order concerning the restraint or disposal of such dog as may deem, may be deemed necessary. Anyone wishing to be heard should appear at this time and place designated. Mark Elfman, clerk, Board of Selectmen.
Chairman, it's probably appropriate to hear from the animal control officer first.
Sue?
On February, Mark Brennan's large mixed breed dog attacked William Short's dog on February fifteenth. Mr. Short was walking his dog, Colby, an eight-year-old puggle, on leash near his home when the incident occurred. Mr. Brennan's dog was outside unattended. Colby sustained a large laceration to her side, which required suturing and a drain under, under anesthesia. I think you should have pictures of, that were sent by the surgeon. Lacy has a history of aggression. In two thousand and nine and two thousand and twelve, she attacked another dog. Both dogs were large. Both dogs sustained puncture wounds.
So was the, was the dog, the other two times that the dog had bitten, were they ever right before the selection?
They were not. The, on the first incident in two thousand and nine, Lacy was actually on leash, being walked by Mr. Brennan's son, when a dog that was off-leash unattended approached her and, and she bit the dog as it approached her. The other time, Mr. Brennan was, had Lacy off-leash in the woods in Plainville and thought that there wouldn't be anyone around, and Lacy charged and, and bit another dog. No, he was, this is your first time hearing about.
But this is the first formal complaint?
Okay. Correct.
Thank you.
Any sanctions on the prior two events?
No.
Do you have any recommendation for the board?
I do.
To run action? Do you want to just go through that?
Because of Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brennan has failed to restrain the dog despite knowledge that she is dog aggressive, and because of the severity of the injuries she inflicted, I do not feel it's reasonable to risk another incident, and I'm recommending, well, we need to, she hasn't been declared, if she is declared dangerous, this would be my recommendation that she, that, that board select option seven, which is euthanasia.
Fair enough. Are the Brennans here?
I'm ready.
Can you come up?
Hi.
Hi.
We did, Sue did ask us to get a muzzle. We did do that. I no longer walk the dog. My kids don't either. If I take her out, it's in the backyard. She's always on a leash. She's always normally on a leash. He was putting her in the truck that day, and he has to lift her up because her hips are bad. So he had the door, he was getting the door open. I, I don't know why she went after the dog. I really don't. And yes, she has had problems with other dogs too, but years ago. And Mark is usually good with the leash on her. She's, she, if he takes her out off the yard now, she's a muzzle. In the yard, she's on a leash.
Is she, is she ever off-leash? No?
No.
What did you say about the muzzle?
She's, Sue suggested a muzzle, and we do muzzle her now.
Oh, after this incident?
Yes.
I, I issued an interim order. And that, I'm limited what I can order. I issued leashed and muzzled pending this hearing. Not because I saw that as the final solution, but because that was.
Interim.
Interim.
Would, would you recommend that as a, as a solution going forward?
The dog was out, no, because the dog was outside unattended.
But she wasn't unattended. Mark was getting ready to put her in the truck to take her out.
I believe the owner of the other dog is here, and.
Oh, hell.
Oh, all right. So as I understand, he was, Mr. Short was left, was unaided, had to separate the two dogs. So Mr. Brennan was not available to, to do that. So not, the dog had time to stalk the, the victim dog, attack it. Took time to separate the dogs. And it was only after Mr. Short got the dog separated that Mr. Brennan, as I understand it from Mr. Short, appeared. So I don't think that that shows responsibility. I'm hesitant, unfortunately, to recommend other, other options because they're only, they only work if, if someone follows them. And to, and this shouldn't have happened if, if Mr. Brennan was being responsible and taking caution.
The question I have is, when did you issue the interim order? After, after the, the Lacy attacked Colby?
Correct. After, so initially, I issued a quarantine at the end of ten days. That's when I issued the interim order to.
And then post that issuance, did you witness Lacy out without being leashed or muzzled?
I did not, but I, I did, I did not.
And you're, you, you said that Lacy is leashed and muzzled?
Yes, yes, yes.
But if your husband was putting the dog in the truck, as you say, how come he didn't show up until after Mr. Short had separated the dog?
Right. I was at work. I wasn't, this is what Mark told me. Did you see anything?
Yeah.
He was home. Keenan was home.
We haven't sworn anybody.
Yeah. It's my fault. I apologize. We, normally, when we give testimony to, to a public hearing like this, we normally give test, we have sworn testimony. So could you please raise your right hand and, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And do you, are you going to offer testimony as well? Yes, and your name, name for the record is?
I'm Lisa Brennan.
Lisa Brennan, okay. And you, sir?
I'm Keenan Brennan.
Keenan Brennan. And could you raise your right hand, please? Swear to tell, swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And you, sir?
I'm William Short.
William Short, okay. And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Good.
Great, thank you. Anyone else going to offer at this point? Okay, great. Thank you. My fault.
What did I ask? Keenan. Yeah.
He was, I was not home. I was at work.
Keenan, what did, what did you, what did you see?
So I was actually inside during this, but I had come outside when I heard it. And when I went outside, both my father and the other man were over with the dogs. I'm not sure if it was just him that took them apart, but I do know that my dad was over there attempting to help.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the Brennans? Further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. Did you actually witness the attack?
I did not witness it. I heard it.
So you, you came in after the fact?
Yes. I was inside, and once I heard it, I ran outside.
Fair enough. Thank you.
And your father was outside?
Yes. My father was outside.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Short?
I am.
Recall what happened?
Yeah, so as I detailed in my notes to you guys, I was just walking Colby like I normally do on our, our normal nightly walk. Actually heard a car behind us, one of our neighbors driving up. It was Valentine's night, definitely going out probably for a nice dinner. So we always walk in the streets, so I just moved over the edge. At that point, I heard somebody yell something, didn't quite know what it was. It sounded like I heard, look out for that dog was kind of what I got made out. I thought it was almost a little joke, saying, get out of the road with one of our neighbors. So I just scooted over. At that point, Colby was a couple of steps behind me. The dog, I turned around, just attacked Colby, started wrestling, latched on pretty good. I obviously, at that point, you just react. So I did what I had to to get the dog off. Just want to say, I'm a big dog guy. I love dogs, so it was very tough to see and be a part of. But I was able to separate him. I was, there was, our neighbors had stopped who was driving by, and they witnessed the attack. As he told me the next day, obviously, I didn't see it because it was dark, but apparently the dog was pretty much preying on us from behind. So this wasn't a, you know, we've seen scuffles before with dogs where maybe they're sniffing each other and something doesn't go right, and they go at each other. This was definitely not it. This was a, definitely an attack of some sort. I, I, at the time, just was worried about getting my dog safe and sound. So at that point, once I got Colby loose, I looked down and saw her side opened up, knew there was something obviously very wrong. At that point, the neighbors were out helping, the gentleman did, I think Mark did come out at that point, but it was, it was not right away. So I'm a little concerned with where they said he was because I did not see him at all. I, when I turned around, he definitely got control of the dog. But it was, it was a little bit after when everything was kind of calmed down at that point.
Do you see Lacy out and about since the?
Just a few times on the deck. Actually, today, driving home from the work, we live two doors down, so I just want to say, Lisa's been phenomenal through all this. She's paid the medical bills. She's come and checked on Colby, so she's been very supportive in all this. But we did see Lacy today. I don't know if it was muzzled. We drive by, we don't really look too hard. But we did, we've seen her probably two or three times. And she was leashed. We saw, I saw the leash, so.
Questions from the board?
The only thing that I'm kind of struggling a little bit with is, in oh nine, a dog bit a dog, but it was kind of like in self-defense, and there was no action taken. And in two thousand and twelve, there was no action taken, and now this is the first time it's before us. And, and you mentioned putting the dog down. I mean, I don't know if that's a normal process.
I'm, my, I'm looking at the fact that the owner is aware that the dog is dog aggressive and at the results of this, the injuries of the Colby, I'm looking at the severity. That was how I came to my dis, recommendation.
But you did also meet, you met Lacy, and she was perfectly fine with you in not coming into the house.
An animal can be, an animal that is dog aggressive is not necessarily human aggressive. They're, they're two separate entities, two separate behaviors.
Mrs. Brennan, Lacy was a rescue. I ran here. How long have you had her?
Since oh nine. When we first got her, Keenan was walking her. We didn't know that she was aggressive like that, so he was walking her. And that's what happened was the first dog, I think she wasn't, he had her on a leash, but he just couldn't, younger, in oh nine, he just couldn't control her. So that's what happened at first.
Mrs. Brennan, if, if your husband, who, he's not here tonight?
No, he's a truck driver.
Okay, if he was, it was, said that he was putting your dog into his truck. Now, if the dog got away from him, wouldn't he have chased him or?
Yeah, I, I wasn't home. This is just what.
Well, that's, that's the question. Well, it'd be nice to have, have your husband.
Yeah, he was getting ready to take her for a walk. If she's in our yard, she's always, except for this time, always on a leash unless he's taken her into, taken her for a walk, because he has to bring her to the truck. So he just walks her over to the truck, picks her up, and puts her in it. Otherwise, she's, he even said he's never, he didn't even know he had a dog, because she's always on the leash on the porch or out back.
But the thing is, if you have, if, if, your, your dog is supposed to, according to the bylaws, under control, like, not necessarily by, like a voice control. And if your husband saw that the dog was running, although nobody says running, it was stalking, how come your husband didn't call him back? how come your husband didn't call him back, which would make him under voice control? Doesn't sound like there was anybody there to see the actions of your dog.
I know Mark was outside.
He was outside the house, I don't know.
I have, I don't know. I wasn't there.
Mr. Chairman, uh, maybe just, uh, that's a similar line of question that I had as well, is, maybe could ask, um, the gentleman who's, who's here right now. So could you just explain, you, you heard, you, you said you, you sensed that the dog was stalking your dog at the time? And at any time, did you hear the owner call out, uh, call the dog back at all?
Yeah, absolutely not. So I didn't actually see the, just to be clear, I didn't see the dog stalking us, 'cause it was dark. It was the, the witness that was driving up with the headlights, so, um, 'cause it came out of nowhere. Uh, I did not hear anything. Um, there was obviously a lot of commotion. Um, it wasn't until he did come out and he definitely was very concerned and yelling at the dog at that point, so.
Right.
Um, but it, it was a little bit after, yeah.
So when, when, when the attack occurred, was, uh, how quickly did he respond to the situation?
I, it, it was so quick. Uh, I was just so focused on the dog, I'm gonna be totally honest. I was just trying to get it off. Um, maybe some of the witnesses, if we needed a statement, I, I don't know. Someone, because there was a, literally a car stopped and watched and saw this happen, so it wasn't like it was just me there, so.
Can I offer that, um, the person that was in the car, I spoke to about the incident coincidentally? And, um, the person in the car who can't be here today, um, said it seemed like to him the dog came from an entirely different part of the yard than where the car or truck was and supposedly the owner putting the dog in the, um, in the car. It seemed like the other side of the yard. Does that seem correct to you two? Or do you not remember? You don't?
Are you asking?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Did it seem like it was a different part of the yard?
Yeah, I mean, so where we were at was, um, probably about 10 to 15 yards short of their driveway. And the attack happened behind me and I was facing the driveway, so for a dog, I would've seen it or heard it or s-. So I'm assuming, my estimate was it came from the back and came, it's just by what was described to me by the people that witnessed it, so.
So it was a separate part of the yard that the dog came from?
Is there any way to, that person could offer testimony to the, to the, because that's actually helpful to the descri- to what actually happened?
I know he had a conflict tonight. He had another meeting tonight, so he couldn't be here, which is why he reached out to me. But, you know, we can certainly get written testimony or, uh...
He did say.
Wait a minute.
He would think it all, he would.
Yeah.
Coincidentally, his wife's here.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, he said any sort of things he needed to do as far as a written testimony, but.
Did you wanna say something, sir?
No, I just.
Were, were, were you actually a witness to what happened? Oh, you were? All right, so I'm gonna have to swear you in then if you offer testimony. You wanna raise your right hand? You, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. All right, you wanna just step forward, please?
Come up to the table, please.
She stated her name?
Yes, uh, can you state your name for the record, please?
Susan Berry.
Susan Berry, yeah.
So tell us what you and Tom saw.
Okay, so we were heading out to dinner. It was Valentine's Day. We went to dinner. I actually thought my husband was just teasing, because we pulled up and he said, "Look out for that vicious dog." "Look out for that dog. It's vicious." And I thought that he meant Colby and was just teasing with them. And then, all of a sudden, from around the side of the tree, he came up and attacked him from, from behind. Um, as, I mean, I, we didn't see him cross the yard, so I don't know if he was just by the tree watching. I have no idea. Um, but he did come from behind. Um, it was very quick. It was very loud, because my kids thought, driving down the road, that we had hit a, a dog, because it was so loud. They heard it inside my closed house.
Did, uh, did you at any time see the owner of the dog in, in, in?
He was over by his truck.
I see.
He did run over and literally like slid in trying to help, but it was, I think you had already separated them at that point.
So in, in your experience, um, when, when a dog has a penchant for attacking other dogs, does, does this behavior continue? Is it? I mean, getting into dog psychology here, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, we, we obviously struggle with these.
I would ex, yes, typically, um, this, this is a, um, reoccurring pattern of behavior. They, yes, and I, I would ask if, whether Mr. Brennan was out by his truck or not out by his truck, the outcome was the same. The dog was attacked and, and sustained severe injuries. It could have been prevented by a leash, and that would be a reasonable thing to expect someone who has a dog, aggressive dog, to not, oh, probably nobody will be walking by. It'll be okay. To, to, to take those very reasonable, not inconvenient, um, precautions to have the animal on leash to... And they weren't taken.
Yeah, I struggle with the, why the leash was off, to put the car, the dog in the car. I mean, I put my dog in the car, I'd walk her to the car, put her in the car and take the leash off. And if I had a, that's the one I'm, I'm struggling with, with the, 'cause that scares me for, if it could happen again. I don't think he intentionally let the dog out and it ran away. It's the fact that we weren't responsible enough to keep it on leash. I, I guess maybe I'm missing the point, but it's just, that's what worries me is, I mean, we have a lot of dogs, a lot of kids right in that area, including my son, who's a, a year and a half old. He was in that same spot that we walked in, literally the weekend before. Thankfully, he's not a, a, a human aggressive dog, but I don't know if it was dark and I was walking with my son. Like, that's where I just wanna make sure, and that's why I'm here tonight, is just to make sure it doesn't happen again. I, I don't, we love dogs, like I talked about. We don't, we don't wanna see any harm. It's just really for the safety of our neighborhood. Um, we recently moved in four months ago, so we're very new into the neighborhood. We moved into a neighborhood in Foxborough based on having a child and a dog, trying to think that's where we could be safe and not have to worry about things. And so, uh, it's just very disturbing and sad. I mean, it's tough to be here tonight, um, and to see what, um, our dog has gone through. Um, she's, she's done okay physically. It's just the, the mental aspect that we're still dealing with. Like, she struggles to go out at night. She's definitely very jumpy, so it's really the next one I'm worried about.
Question through the chair?
Yep.
Uh, Mrs. Berry, when, when your husband yelled, yelled for the vicious dog, is that just an expression from that moment that there was a dog that looked vicious? Or is it your awareness of 2009 or 12?
Yes.
Or are there other incidents in the neighborhood that are not reported?
We were there when it, when, um, the incident happened in '09.
In '09, okay, so, and other than the ones that reported in '09 or, or 12, is it a recurrence in the neighborhood that might not get re, uh, reported that people have seen or?
Not that we're aware of.
No?
I know that he has been loose, or she, I'm sorry, she has been loose.
She's never been loose out in the neighborhoods?
Um, my understanding is she was out behind the Flaherty's a few weeks ago.
Who was Flaherty's?
Um, the house directly across from.
You probably wanna limit that conversation back and forth, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, she was a couple weeks.
You're gonna have to come up to the, speak into the microphone if you're gonna speak.
She was not, she was not behind Flaherty's. I don't know. I've never heard this before, ever. She doesn't... The only time she goes out of the house is with Mark. I won't even take her out anymore, unless it's in our backyard on a leash. I don't take her out of the yard. She never, I, if she's home, Mark's home. If she's out, she's with Mark. I don't know who said that. Did you see her?
No, I did not see her. It was a neighbor told me.
Yeah, they, they actually told me the same thing, too. They're across the street. It was two weeks prior to the attack. He said he moved, the dog took a hockey stick and moved it from the front porch to the back, so there was something strange like that, but.
But what?
Unfortunately, if you, if neither one of you saw that personally, you can't really offer that as testimony. That's hearsay.
I'm sorry.
So, um, Mr. Chairman, um, town council is here, they can talk to you about some of the options that are available to the board. Unless you, unless there's further testimony that you wanna hear from, from the individuals here.
Anybody, you hear anything else? Kate?
Now, if I speak, you could still ask if there are other questions. It might, might give me the options of, of that. Under the statute, which is chapter 140, section 140, 157, um, there are two kinds of complaints and hearings. One is a declared dog a nuisance dog, and the other, the one that is reporting tonight, that was brought by the animal control officer, is a dangerous dog. And as she said earlier, when she picked option seven as her recommendation, there are fewer options if it's a nuisance dog for restraining it. But the options are, um, if the board declares the dog a nuisance. I mean, first of all, you could dismiss the complaint. You could declare the dog a nuisance dog, even though the complaint that was brought is a dangerous dog. Or you could declare it a dangerous dog. If you declare the dog to be a nuisance, you can further order that the owner take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. It sounds as though some of that has already been done. There would have to be some, uh, further condition put on this situation so that these things don't happen in the future, and I would be best to the animal control officer, if the board goes with nuisance to make a decision. But again, she's, the animal control officer brought this as a dangerous dog claim. And the seven options under that are, and I'll just read the summaries if you have any questions about it. Each one has a long paragraph explaining what it means. First is that the dog be humanely restrained. Second is that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog and confined and securely contained indoors or outdoors in a secure enclosed pen. The third option is that when removed from the premises of the owner or where the dog is kept, the dog be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum strength of 300 pounds. Fourth option, and you can pick more than one of these. Um, the fourth is that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000. The fifth option is that the owner or keeper provide the licensing authority or animal control officer with information about the dog so that it could be identified, like photos and videos and that sort of thing. Uh, sixth is that unless the owner of the dog provides evidence that a veterinarian is of the opinion that the dog is unfit for alteration because of a medical condition, that the dog be altered, and it's quite possible this dog has already been spayed, so that may not, um, apply, but I'll leave that to the owner. And the seventh and final option is that the dog be humanely euthanized. And there is, there is an appeals period, depending on whatever the board decides. The owner of the dog can appeal if they don't like what was decided. Any questions on the details of those seven options?
So how, how large is the dog?
In the neighborhood of 80 pounds.
80 pounds?
A big girl.
Is that why, Mrs. Brennan, is that why you don't walk the dog anymore? 'Cause it's a large dog?
No, I did, I don't wanna take it out in the street or off the property if something, well, she is big, but I can, I can walk her and she doesn't pull me or anything like that, but I just don't wanna take a chance. I let Mark do that.
Take a chance on what?
Well, if something happens, I.
She attacked, that, that, your dog attacks another dog?
Well, I don't know that she would. I wasn't there that day, but I'm not taking any chances.
So you have a fear that your dog might, even if it's on leash, might attack another dog?
I don't have, well, I don't know why she attacked his dog, and I'm, he knows I'm sorry about that. I don't know why she did it. I don't... But she has dogs that she hangs out with, like dog friends that she doesn't bite. I...
Where was, where was that?
Um, he, Mark's friends has dogs, and she goes over to their house all the time, and they have no problems. So it's not every dog. I, I don't know why she did it. I wasn't there. I don't know why, but I'm not... And I don't want the kids walking her. I'm not gonna walk her. I let Mark. It's Mark's dog. I'll take her out in the yard.
Is your yard fenced?
No.
So when you take her out in the yard, do you take her on a leash?
Yes.
And that's because?
I've always put her on the leash from the house before we go out. I've always done that. But I feel more comfortable walking her in the yard, I guess, now, after what she did.
So, confining to premises, that would be a fenced yard or some sort of, um, fenced-in enclosure?
Yeah, the dog, the, the, that's the third option, and that is, uh, confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog. Provided, however, that confinement shall mean securely confined either indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper. Further, provided that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof. And if such enclosure has no floor secured to the sides thereof, the sides should be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet. And provided further that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog.
Mrs. Brennan, do you have a yard that, that could, that could properly confine the dog in that area in that way?
You mean with a fence? So we have a pretty good sized yard. The back, in the back is, there is already a fence there in the way back. It would just be the, oh, and there's a fence on the side. It would just be, yeah.
But you understand you would have to fence the entire yard to do that?
Or a pen, or a fenced-in dog run area, but the dog would have to be attached to the dog run, sort of like those clothesline things.
Mm-hmm.
And if the dog would have to be protected, you can't leave the dog outside in a pen that has no roof. It's gotta have walls and sides. If, if that option is chosen. The other, the similar option to that one, sorry, that's the second one. The first option, if the dog is declared dangerous, is that it be humanely restrained, provided that no order shall provide that a dog be, uh, deemed dangerous, be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree, a post, or a building. So the dog can't just be tied up outside without shelter.
I, I don't understand what that means, like, 'cause she'll be tied up now on the porch, but you mean she has to be enclosed? Is that what you mean?
If you're gonna leave her out for long periods of time, and the details of this, perhaps the animal control officer could address further. The statute just says that the dog be humanely restrained, and there are probably multiple ways to do that. If the dog is just out in the yard for a short period of time, you don't need to have an enclosure. But again, it, it also depends on what the board decides. If they decide just to say, "Humanely restrain this dog," then you just, you don't need to build a pen. You need to just make sure that the dog is muzzled, tethered, whatever else the animal control officer recommends. If the board decides that's not gonna be safe enough, or they may be concerned that the dog's not gonna be watched, guarded enough and, you know, the muzzle maintained, and that she's gonna be left to her own, they may go with a stronger option. If they go with that option to build a shelter, you would have to either fence in the area with a dog run or build a shelter, a pet, um, shelter of some sort with a roof. And again, I defer to the animal control officer further on any of these technical things with respect to tethering or restraining or muzzling.
Statute effectively contemplated the fact that they don't want people just tying the dog outside and leaving it there all day long in the elements or anything like that, but obviously reasonable time would be, you know, an hour or so, I would think, something to that effect. But there's no, I don't think there's any real clear, clearly defined timeframe.
Correct.
I don't leave her outside. If Mark, um, he chops wood outside, she's usually tied up out back with him when he's home. I don't, I never leave her outside. I never have, really.
Well, keep in mind that second section says confined to the premises, indoors, or if it's gonna be outdoors, then that section contemplates a pen that's locked.
If, if nobody's outside, she's usually in the house. But Mark is usually outside, like I said, chopping wood, or he listens to the radio on his truck, and she'll sit in the truck with him.
But the, the, the issue there is that if he's busy doing something else, he's not effectively attending to the dog. And the question.
But she's tied up.
She'd be tied up, but, and so the question is, tying up is, is just not the only thing you can do. You have to make sure it's, she's in a, she's in a contained environment.
I see.
Answer the question to Control Officer Thibodeau. So you made your recommendation, if the board deems the dog to be dangerous, then euthanasia? H- having said that, now you've listened to four people testify, do you still have that same recommendation after hearing?
Um, um, so it, it, it's still. Um, so it, it still relies on human compliance and not to, um, to be a hun, to be, to comply a hundred percent of the time. Mr. Brennan's, what he said to me in 2012, when Lacy attacked a dog in the woods, was, "I didn't think there'd be, anybody else would be out here." This, I believe it was a weekend, reasonably good weather. I, I don't think that was very good judgment.
But with all due respect there to you, Sue, you took that woman's word. You didn't see...
No, that, that's what he said to me was...
I know he said to you, but you took that woman's word. She said her dog was on a leash and Mark said the dog was not on a leash and their dogs came running at each other. But she told you her dog was on a leash and you didn't see that. You just took her word for that.
Well, I don't think that's relevant in this case.
I understand that, but I do understand.
The issue is that there was no, there was no action taken back in 2012. So the, the only thing that's really before the board is what action they can take in this instance.
And I, I think my point was that he knew he was taking a chance by saying, "I didn't think anybody," he acknowledged, he was acknowledging that the dog, if, was dog aggressive. If they encountered another dog, it would likely be a problem, I, by saying, "I didn't think there was anybody, would be anybody else out there." So there was risk-taking.
Thank you.
So if we deem the dog dangerous and we recommend going along with the dog officer's recommendation, euthanasia, what is, what is the rights of the Brennans? Can they appeal it?
They can appeal it to court. And I'll defer to, to town council on that.
They have ten days in which to petition an appeal to district court. During that time, the town would also have the authority to petition district court, it's the same district court, to have the dog confined. And it would be a facility the municipality uses to shelter animals for a dog complained of as being a dangerous dog. So pending the appeal, you could take the dog and put it in a shelter so that it didn't injure anybody else.
So there's, there's actually two, two decisions before us. One, to determine if it's a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog.
Correct.
Then what's the, what's the remedy?
And what's the remedy beyond that?
So what made you determine that the complaint would be that the dog is a dangerous dog as opposed to a nuisance dog?
It meets the definition, dangerous dog, a dog that either, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would, would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. So part one of that definition.
And Sue, confined to the premises means the dog cannot be on a leash outside on the public street, correct?
I don't, I don't think so. That is, which, which, confined to the premises, that's option two, confined to the premises.
Yeah, that does not appear to contemplate bringing the dog out for a walk. It's either confined inside the house or in a shelter outside.
So it can't be taken out for a walk?
Not in the neighborhood.
It doesn't specify that, but it's, it limits to what you can do with the dog, either in the house or in the yard, in a secure fenced-in pen.
So you can't take it for a ride in the truck?
So, given that it doesn't, yeah, given that it doesn't give any further description, it doesn't say humanely restrained, which would be, put a muzzle and you can take it out for a walk. So it would be a more severe remedy.
Yeah.
That's been my understanding as well.
More questions from the board? Venus is a public hearing. Is there any questions from people in the audience?
Sir?
No. So I think the first issue before us is determine whether the dog is considered dangerous.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to interrupt. I want to clarify based on that last question that was asked. As I mentioned earlier, the statute provides that you can pick one or more of the options. So actually, confining to the premises you could do, and then you could also do allowing the dog to go off the premises, but that's when that...
Item number three.
Muzzle, item three, strength of three hundred pounds, not exceeding three feet in length. If the dog was to be allowed off the premises, it would have to have that.
Right. Mike, can we close it?
Yeah. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor? All right.
I mean, I think it falls under the definition of dangerous. So the first question, I guess, would be move to declare the dog a danger.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Okay.
Well, this is certainly the hot pot, you know. I'm a dog owner. I think we all are. And the last thing I want to do is euthanize, you know, someone's, someone's dog. I don't know what to do.
So, Sue, what's the risk in liability if the dog was, was confined to the premises?
Liability to...
The Brennans. Is there any, is there any, is there any liability to the town?
Not, I mean, the statute allows it, so you would be within your rights if you felt that if you decide the dog's dangerous, you decide that that's what you're going to order it to do. They can appeal your order and a court can consider that. But there's no provision for them to bring a suit against the town for following a statute or a...
I guess my question was, what happens if the dog gets out? It may be, it may fall back to the individual owner.
That would certainly not be any liability on the town because you'd be taking action to prevent that from happening. So if it were to happen, the owner would be, have to be seriously concerned about a lawsuit because this proceeding has already taken place.
Number three, when, it says, "When removed from the premises, the dog can have a muzzle and a leash." But that's, can we modify that, say, even if the dog is on the deck? Because Mrs. Brennan said she keeps the dog on the deck. Can we require that the dog be on a leash and muzzled even on the deck?
Yes, because it says humanely restrained as one of, that's the first option.
Yeah.
And again, you can require several of these. If you want to require that they can have it on the deck restrained, they can have it in the backyard if it's in a pen, they can take it in the truck if it's got, and it's not a leash, it's a chain, a chain or, well, tethering device. With a minimum tensile strength, three hundred pounds.
I think we should go like the two and three route.
But if, but if, if the dog gets out one more time, it's seen by the neighborhood, then that's it? And we, then can we say, if that's the case, then it has to be euthanized?
Well, you'd have to rehear the matter and then, and then determine it.
Well, no, can't you make that a condition right now for this?
Well, it's, at that point, it, it falls into the, in the hands of others making that judgment as opposed to the board. The board has to make that judgment.
Yeah, if you don't vote to euthanize tonight and something else should happen, you would need to take another vote if you're going to go the route of euthanasia.
Okay, can we say, if, if the dog is, comes out at one point, then you have to, you have to come back and we'll have another hearing? Can we do it that way?
Yeah.
You could. You don't need to put conditions, but there's another statute that governs this. And I know you've been through this before, and that's if you issue an order and somebody violates it, then we're talking fines and other, that's an imprisonment. That's chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven A. First offense, a fine of not more than five hundred dollars or imprisonment for not more than sixty days. So there are consequences. So you don't, I mean, you could put conditions in it, but the statute that gives you the authority to decide whether to declare the dog dangerous and then what to do about it, it doesn't provide for adding all these other conditions. But the next statute that follows it provides for penalties if the owner should violate.
Because like you said, we've, we've had other dog complaints before. Sue has come before us before. She's never suggested that a dog be euthanized. That tells me that she has a great concern about the, about the actions of the dog and the owner. That's what concerns me.
Having gone through a number of these with Sue, and she does go, you do go out of your way to look at recommendations with options of tethering and securing and very seldom. I, I think we, we have had to put the dog down before through your, through this process. You might not have been on the board, but it's, it's a tough decision. And like Mr. Elfman said, a lot of us are dog owners. I've had them all my life. So it's not an easy decision. But, you know, what, what, what I'm looking at is not a dog bite. It's not two puncture wounds. This dog was ripped apart. And it's, it's tough pictures to look at. I know Meadowview very well. I know their tight neighborhoods. I know there's a ton of kids in that neighborhood. There's a lot of dogs in that neighborhood. The Flaherty's across the street have dogs. I think my responsibility foremost, and I'm sympathetic to the owner and the dog, but my responsibility, I think, is to the neighborhood, that this, if the dog is out and another dog comes by, I think it will happen again. And I'm not confident that your husband or whoever's there is going to be able to keep a muzzle and keep it tethered and do the steps prop, because we're sitting here after two other ones. And they may not have been as cut and dry as this, but the fact that you know it is bad with other dogs, that you have to take these precautions. If it happens again, we're going to have the same discussion. And, I mean, this little dog would rip to pieces. And it's gonna, so I, I hate to say it, but I would go for the option that if it is a dangerous dog, which we just deemed it was, that it's euthanized.
I'd also go along with Sue's recommendation.
Let me make a motion and see how the rest of the board feels. I move that Brennan's dog be euthanized.
So I'll second the motion.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor? All's opposed? Three, two.
Let's conclude this matter.
So, Sue, can you just explain the process? How it goes? What happens next?
As town council said, the Brennans have the right to appeal. They have ten days and, and the town can ask the court to impound the animal pending the appeal process. They have ten days to start that appeal process, but that appeal process can take several number of months. So my recommendation would be to, if, if the Brennans do appeal, to seek impoundment.
The statute doesn't require a written order, but I would recommend a written order so that if it's appealed, the court will see exactly what the board decided and the basis therefore.
Who's responsible for the costs of the, of the pen? Who's responsible for the cost?
The impounding.
Of the impounding? The owner, that's covered in the statute too. The town would get reimbursed for that. But my understanding from a previous discussion with Sue is that there's a shelter that you use that you don't have to pay for. You would get reimbursed. The owner would have to pay the town for, for any cost for the impoundment.
A question. She has to be impounded first?
I think the issue is...
If you appeal this, then the town has the right to impound.
What happens to the dog right now?
The dog, the dog is restrained to, to the house right now, I believe, right?
Hopefully, it's still being restrained, but yeah.
That, the, my order ends, it already ended. It's for, it, it, it's, I can only issue it for fourteen days, then it is automatically vacated. So can they, can the board issue their own order to cover the next?
How about it, since the statute doesn't provide for that, you can, there's nothing that prevents consecutive orders, I would assume. So you could issue another order effective right now for the next fourteen day period.
Okay.
And the board, hopefully as early as tomorrow morning, could serve, I mean, for the purposes of appeal, the ten days starts right now because she's got actual notice. But I would recommend putting in writing and having served or sent by certified mail an order, just summarizing what the board did tonight, similar to the order that was issued for the hearing.
Can I just say one thing? Certified mail, nobody's ever home to get it, so I'm...
You have actual notice because you're here right now and you know what they voted.
Oh, okay, okay.
So they can leave it at last unusual. There are a number of other ways, meaning the sheriff can place it at your last unusual address, and that counts as having been received.
Does it have to be issued by the sheriff or could it be issued by the animal control officer?
It could be issued by, as I mentioned, there's no requirement that you have a writing even. So technically, you don't, you don't even need this. The order was, the board voted right now, so it's effective right now. I just recommend for any appeal that you have a written order stating what the board did. So service is not covered either, but it's helpful if you do end up in court to have evidence that you sent the notice. But again, even if you don't, you have what's called actual notice, means she knows. She doesn't need to get it in writing because she was present at a hearing with witnesses and we know that she heard the decision.
So in, in that order, do we have to stipulate in case of appeal, what's going to happen with the dog in the interim?
No, because you, you don't know if she's going to appeal. You just wait and see what happens. But the order itself just says the two votes that you took, dangerous, and then to go with option seven of euthanasia based on the history.
So if there's no appeal within ten days, then what happens to the, how is, what's the process after that?
If there's no appeal?
If there is no appeal.
Okay, and who, what, would Sue take custody of the dog?
Start it to custody.
Would it be, if the family decided to not appeal, couldn't they not take Lacy to their own vet and just provide proof of euthanasia?
They could. I believe Foxborough's bylaws provides, or regulations provides for that. Yeah, the, the order to euthanize doesn't mean that the town has to do it. And typically, the owner would do it. But the provision for the town to impound is if there's an appeal. And some people appeal the very next day. Some people wait till the end of the ten-day appeal period. That's when the town has the, or if you think there's going to be an appeal, that's when you can appeal to district court. You can file a petition to impound the dog pending the appeal of your decision to euthanize.
Any further questions from the board? All set?
All set.
All set. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Sue.
Oh, thank you, Mike. Thank you. Oh, I'm going to go through the warrant.
Okay, a little bit after...
Yeah.
Eight o'clock. It was seven thirty. Discussion, possible action, town warrant articles, proposed fiscal year nineteen budget.
So, Mr. Chairman, before the, the board tonight, you have the, the most recent version, actually from, from town council who was here tonight. You go through the warrant, has gone through the warrant. And there's a redlined version for you to, to review. There are, there are a few items, this is draft copy two, that's been revised through town council. And there are a few items which... And there are a few items which, uh, are not going to be ready to go forward, so, um, if you want to go through them one by one, it's entirely up to you how you want to proceed, Mr. Chairman, but, um, uh, I know we've had discussion already about the CIP article. If you want to go back to that, we had a discussion tonight, you have that option as well, and-
Can we just run through article by article?
Sure, that's fine. That's your option.
Some of these will, will warrant a little bit of discussion, some with no discussion.
Fair enough. That's, that's your, your call. Article one. I thought you were going to do it, sorry.
I can do it, but-
Article one is just the annual town, town elections, and that is the report of the actual, uh, election results. And that usually is reported by the, uh, by, by the town clerk. Article two is to hear the report of town officers and act thereon. Now, there wasn't any particular, uh, reports. Obviously, the annual town report is available for everyone. Will be available for everyone at the town meeting and to hear any special reports that anyone wants to report on. So those are, one and two are, are normal, uh, repeat articles that are on every town meeting warrant. The second, the third one is, is, falls into that same category, to hear reports of any committee, uh, that, uh, that may want to report before the town meeting. In typical fashion, uh, committees that, uh, have worked on something during the past year may want to report to the board as to what the status of those items are. Also, this is an opportunity where board, where, where committees may conclude their, their work by issuing a final report. And sometimes committees themselves can be disbanded at that time if, if in fact their work has been completed. Uh, article four is, is the budget. You have as a separate table, uh, in, in your documents tonight, uh, the actual budget itself. And obviously that requires, uh, discussion unto itself, so I'm sure you want, at some point want to come back to that. Article five is to see if the town will adopt a recommended capital improvement plan. I can just report to you that, that's not, those results are not for them, available for them tonight. Is that accurate, Randy?
But I can, I just finished preparing them, so I'm happy to distribute them if they'd like.
Why don't we, why don't we do that after tonight and we'll give it to them so we can, they can start looking at and go through the results. We did conclude the hearings on Saturday this past week and, uh, the process was pretty efficient. We got through all of the articles that were there and, uh, made recommendations on all, on the funding on each of those. Article six, uh, was the, is the high school track, which is a capital item, the high school track in stands. And that's a request for appropriation of 1.15 million dollars. That came, that was an out, out, um, from the outset, that was an article that was placed, but also consistent with the, with the capital committee. The capital committee did act on that and did recommend that the funding be, uh, be acted on at town meeting. The vote on that was three to two.
Just to touch on that, uh, we discuss some of these articles as we go. Dave?
It's coming out of CIP. So the, the sponsor of the article for article six, that has to come from us because it's coming out of the CIP and not out of the-
That's correct. And the CIP article is, is, CIP items are ultimately the recommendation of the board of selectmen.
So, so we are discussing other ones as we see fit?
Yeah.
So at Saturday's CIP, um, from, my understanding, I just want clarification. It is on the, for the track, it is on the, uh, the warrant? And the only one that can remove it is the board of selectmen voting to remove it?
That's right.
We have that option. If it gets removed, what happens to the CIP vote? It just?
Well, it means that there would be no action before town meeting for consideration. Effectively, there'd be no, no funding requirement.
So the CIP approved it, but stipulated that it's a separate article unto itself?
Right. The discussion followed along the lines of, that it's been before the committee a couple of times and that, the recommendation was to, was, was to make it an article, which it already was. But then the, the funding, uh, when it came to the issue of funding, it was recommended for funding by a, by a vote of three to two.
So they approved the funding, but then they, they made a recommendation to pull it out and have it on its own?
Right, but it already was anyway.
It was already a separate article on the warrant. So that was part of our discussion on Saturday. Well, if we vote yes or no, it's on the warrant. And the only way it can be removed from the warrant is by the board of selectmen removing it.
Correct.
So it was the, the school committee item on the CIP, but because it's a CIP item, it becomes a selectman?
Well, what happens is that this capital plan that gets recommended to, to the board of selectmen by the CIP committee. So the entire plan, which was a request to, to, for funding for this project, was then placed, is in place in a, in a, in a collective, um, group of, of, of projects and then is recommended to the board. This one particularly was, I don't know who actually brought this forward. Was it?
It was under the schools, yeah. So that's a good point, Jim.
Was it?
If somebody wants a fire truck, it's the fire department. They bring it forward. It, it could be the selectman, it could be the town, or it could be collective. I, I haven't been following it.
I, I don't, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure who actually brought it forward, but I think it was the school department.
I think it was always their intent to bring it forward, and I discussed it. The school was the administrator, and so I wrote up the article.
Okay.
Yeah, but it was in, on Saturday, it was in the school's block of-
Correct.
Funding, so theoretically, the schools brought it forward.
It does affect their campus, obviously, but, um, but then again, um, so that was, and it is, and like I said, all capital items then come before the board of selectmen for your recommendation as to how, whether or not it gets put forward to, for funding at town meeting.
And then that's how the CIP becomes the board of selectmen recommendation?
Yes.
So the information we got on Saturday was wrong then?
Was that, no.
That if it was on the warrant regardless, whether we voted yes or no on Saturday, was on the warrant regardless. But it's on the warrant being recommended by the board of selectmen.
No, what, what happens then, Chris, is that it gets, it, it gets recommended to the board for a pla, ultimately that gets placed on the warrant, okay? So the selectmen are the only ones that really can place that, an item like that on the warrant because it's a capital item. So therefore then the question is whether or not it gets recommended by the board. The board can do two things. One, you can ask to remove it and not, and that it, that it not be acted on. Or two is that you cannot, you can recommend that not, that it not be funded. You can take either one of those two actions.
If we took the not be funded, it stays on the warrant and get-
It would stay on the warrant. It'd be acted on by town meeting, but the recommendation from the board of selectmen could be that not be funded. If, if that's your, if that's your so wish to do that. It would then also be, um, that the, but the, uh, the advisory committee will also take action on your recommendations as well and whether they would recommend it or not recommend it.
Or we could go one step further and take it out altogether.
That's correct. That's also an option. It's your warrant. It's the board of selectmen's warrant ultimately. So proceed. Okay, so, uh, number seven is the, is the fire contract. I have an item for you for consideration in executive session tonight for the board to review that. But we have a tentative agreement on that at this point, but it's up to the board to determine if you want to, uh, agree to that, those terms. The dispatcher contract, um, it's not clear whether this will be able to be done or not because the, we were planning to meet again this week and unfortunately due to the weather conditions, I think we're going to likely have to postpone that till, till next week. So we're going to plan to get a meet next Friday. If, if we can get an agreement done on that, um, uh, we, we'll try and, try and do that and have something for you by your next meeting. The DPW contract, um, we reached, tentative reached terms today, this afternoon. We're going to draw it up and, uh, and pull, pull together a memorandum of understanding, which we should have completed this week. And then we'll send it to the board now. It's not clear how we can get that done in timely, in a timely fashion because there are several items to that. So I'm going to defer to Mary Beth on that. Do, do you have a recommendation, course of recommendation for the board?
Well, you know, it's hard for the board to see something in the same night and react to it. It has a lot of pieces to it. So we were going to try to get you the memorandum as soon as it's drawn up this week, put it on board docs or email it to you. The idea is that we would like to have you in executive session, look at it on April 3rd. The, I'm not certain of where the AdCom will be with that, if we're going to have the benefit of another week after that or whether they're going to look at it the same night. We do have another week. Okay, good. So, um, you know, if we did an executive session at the beginning of the meeting and you were comfortable, and you wanted to adopt it in regular session, we could go forward. Or, um, Randy, would we make another two week increment if the board needed two meetings to look at it?
My understanding is, uh, is that, um, the advisory committee is giving themselves until, I believe it's the 25th of, of April-
Okay, good.
Finish their votes. So obviously, certainly have to be a week before that.
Right. But that way, if the board looks at it in executive session on the 3rd, we could wait 14 more days and then you could adopt it in regular session, kind of like we're doing with the fire contract now and then-
Yeah, but we can, we can have executive session if, assuming we get the memorandum.
Document.
Yeah.
You could ask for a special meeting to review that if you needed to.
If we had, if we had to. Or we can go into executive session after a regular meeting and then come back into a public session and, and take, take a vote.
Okay. As soon as that's drawn up, I'm going to send it to you for review and then if you wanted to contact us with questions on specific items, we could talk about it, um, to be ready for the 3rd.
Okay. Obviously, as soon you get it out to us so we can review it, the better.
Hopefully in a couple of days. Agreed this afternoon.
Police contract, it's uncertain to me whether the police contract or the library contract will be able to go forward at this time because they, they're still, quite a bit of work to be done.
Yeah, police had engaged in some negotiations. We haven't even begun with the libraries, so that one's very unlikely. We've reached out, but we haven't heard back.
Right. They have not given, responded back to us. So, um, article, so that, that deals with article 11. Article 12 is, uh, budget adjustments, uh, for current fiscal year. So that, those are things that we need to make adjustments for, for the current fiscal year. And going into next year is two as well.
Right. Uh, there's the, the SEMREC, uh, allocation of, of overhead, which covers both fiscal 18 and fiscal 19. That's one of the two items. And the other one is, uh, an additional investment this year in the OPEB trust in order to keep us on track with the required contribution.
Article 13, um, is the, uh, is a normal article that we see every year. That's the establishment of revolving funds. We did actually bump some of the, uh, numbers on this. Recreation revolving fund was, I think it was 350 last year, Randy. It's up to 375 now. And that's based on the recommendation of the, of the department. Police and fire apparatus utilization revolving fund is the same, I believe. And the rest of them are the same. I don't think there's any further changes beyond that. But you have to vote those every year to establish the fund, revolving funds. Article 14 is the qualified OPEB trust, and that's to, um, to make a, uh, a contribution to the OPEB trust, uh, which we do every year.
You're, you're going on a different, different schedule than we, than we have.
I'm looking at article 14.
Fun stabilization.
You're looking at the third draft?
There's a, there's a version on the 12th and one on the 19th. Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at the latest. I'm looking at the version that says, uh-
319?
March 19th.
This is 312. I'm looking at 312, draft two.
I've got March, I'm looking at the March 12th.
Draft three.
Yeah.
Oh, that's my fault. And I had, I was working at draft two.
So go back to article 11 on draft three.
Sure.
So we, what, okay. What draft do we all want?
Draft three.
Draft three.
Is it on board doc?
Yeah.
I have, I apologize.
Because I have 312, draft two.
Go to, go to 319.
Yeah, three, draft three.
How do I get out of this?
You can just exit out in the corner.
Exit out in the corner.
It should take you back to the page with the agenda.
Three, okay. I get you. Okay. Okay.
Article 11. You, you talking about article 11? You have a question? Well said. Yep, yep. So article 12 is the fund qualified OPEB trust, right? And we do that every, every year. The recommended funding for this year is $964,000. Article 13 is to see if the town will vote to transfer some of free cash and a sum of $1 million to, to fund the capital stabilization fund. Article 14 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash some of $300,000 into, into general stabilization for reserve balances, purposes. And that primarily is because we, as, as part of our, uh, financial policies, we've agreed to maintain a certain amount of money, which is like probably 5% of our operating budget. And, um, in reserve and stabilization, and this will get us up to that and maintain that 5%. Uh, article 15 is the special legislation for the land transfer for the fire department. And that's the land over, by the state land over by, um, over by the, the former Bradley's property.
Yeah, I had a question about that. This was brought up, uh, before the last town meeting and the advisory committee was concerned because section two, um, it, the consideration for the parcel shall be the full and fair market value of the parcel for the use authorized by this act.
Right.
That was the sticking point and we were, well, it was presented by the fire department, just talking to them and presented to the advisory committee that we were getting the land for free.
We are. And so, and that's the language, that's the standard language. We actually had that qualified. So it's the same language that they've used even for the housing authority property and for other parcels as well. It's standard language. We actually reviewed this issue with, with the AdCom already and the AdCom was fine with it after we explained it to-
Okay, so we, we're not going to pay for it?
We are not going to pay any money for it, no. Because, because if we did, we would have to ask for an appropriation to do so. We're not asking for that. So it's, it's a fair point. I'm glad you raised it, but I just, I want to make sure we clarify it for everyone.
But just further clarification, we're not paying any money for the land.
There may be some incidental costs for surveys, things of that nature. We think probably about 20 or $30,000 in that range.
Somewhere, right now, all ballpark numbers is between 10 and 20,000.
10 and 20,000.
Not to exceed 20,000 for us to do all of that type of, uh, survey.
Survey, okay.
And then back to, um, the comment that, that Jenny brought up.
Chief, you're going to have to come up to the, you can't, so people can hear that.
So that was a very, very good question. And what we did find out from talking to Representative Jay Barrows and, and digging into it deeper, it's a boil plate language that the state uses for all of these type of transactions. And, um, it, it's in all their documents. So, um, but again, we're not looking to purchase. It's, it's basically you, the board of selectmen, are going to be requesting them to turn that land over to the town. That's how it, what it really, that's what the article is all about.
And it says, um, if after, it says if, if, if the town doesn't use it for, um, what we're supposed to use it for, then it goes back?
You, you have two options. We have two options. We don't use it for the purpose of, of a fire station. Say the town decides they want to use it for another purpose. We, the town, the board of selectmen, would have to then, uh, request the change of use to the, to the state to get approval. If, or turn the land back over to the state.
Okay, if we turn the land back to the state, would the state reimburse us for any costs that we had?
I, I would speculate the answer is no.
No, okay. Okay.
Because if we, if we were using it to try to determine for our use, it would be, that would be our cost.
And, and from what we found is, um, the state feels that it would be very easy for them to get the, the, the house and the state to approve it for the purpose of public safety and a fire station. That's all.
Thank you, chief. Article 17 is the, uh, article, uh, changing the, proposing to change the language of the capital improvement planning committee.
16.
I have article 17, uh, in the version.
Go to 16.
That's the-
Alcohol.
Oh, I apologize. I went past, I went past 16. Article 16 is the citizen petition for, to upgrade an off premises package store license. This is the individual who owns the package store in the old Bradley shopping center. He's actually made a citizen's petition to request that, uh, make that request. Article 17 is the, is the capital improvement planning committee bylaw. The board did, has already seen this. Um, both myself and Sean made a presentation at the last board meeting. There were a couple changes that the board made, but, but there has been no action since, and there was no formal action. The board had talked about it. We didn't, there was no votes taken. So I'm just looking for guidance here as to how the board wants to proceed because the board, the, the committee or the working group made a, made some recommendations to you. So I think what we'd like to do is get direction from the board as to how you want to officially change the, the article itself. So, um, the, the, there were- So, the, there were two pieces that I recall. One was to, that to change the language that shall be a capital improvement plan consisting of five members who are voting members of the town. I didn't, I didn't, I saw that, that change. And then the second thing was dealing with the language, second part of the, the last half of the, of the first paragraph that dealt with, "No member shall hold in any other full-time or part-time office or employment in the town government, nor shall members, spouse, partner, or immediate family hold any full-time or part-time office or employment in the town government. Immediate family shall be defined according to the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 268 Conflict of Interest Law." So, that's, that's the language that, I know that Selectmen DeVellis had raised that concern, but there was no action taken by the board, so we're just looking for direction on how you want us to proceed.
I actually had, I agreed with Jim on the second half. And I just had a question on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Should be composed of registered voters of the town having operational knowledge of town government and/or financial expertise. What does that mean?
Well, the sense was to try and have people who have had experience in town government, serving on the committee, either serving on a finance committee or a former selectman or school committee or having operational knowledge of the town's functions. So, so as they could be, they could, they could evaluate the items that they have, that are placed before them, and understand the inner workings of those particular items and how well they, and how well they work for the town.
So, you want a registered voter, but you're gonna limit the pool?
It would, it would effectively limit the pool, but, but then again, I think the thinking here was to try and get a knowledgeable group to actually evaluate those things, those items.
Well, we also said and/or financial expertise, so that, that opens up another hole in the pool.
Another group as well.
So, if you have, I'm just throwing hypotheticals.
I understand.
So, if you have a member of the community that works, let's say, in development, okay? And understands the ins and outs in development and construction and could really be a benefit to the CIP for anything that's regarding a major investment in a school building or maintenance or what have you. That person would be precluded from being accepted to the committee because never worked on a committee in town, never, doesn't know anything about town government, but is an expert in that, in that, in that field.
Well, it says, it says having, having operational knowledge of town government and/or financial expertise. So, they could have, they could have either or.
Yeah, but in that case, I think that person would be more interested in the building committee. You know what I'm saying?
He's a taxpayer. He's more interested in where his money's going too, so.
Yeah, but the CIP is more than just building school buildings. It's also-
No, I know. I'm just, I'm just using that as a hypothetical. I mean, I, I just-
And, and-
The whole, the whole, I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, just up up. But I thought the whole idea was to take it, take the CIP out of the realm of department heads and get a more inclusive, inclusive group. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to this. I'm just, you know, if we're trying to make it more inclusive, then we should make it more inclusive and not take it out of one restricted group and put it into another restricted group. Is just what I'm saying.
Do we have any other appointed groups in town that are restricted like this?
I can't think of one off the top of my head, but I can, I can say that, you know, normally, if you wanted, say, an assessor's group, you'd wanna have people that have somewhat understanding of real estate. You know, that you, you know, the same thing goes with usually in like a planning board, you have people that have understanding of construction and, and who build this, a lot of builders who serve in that capacity. So, at least they have an understanding and knowledge of the issues. This is the same type of thing, that we're looking for people to have some working knowledge of how this, how this happens.
So, I guess to answer my own question, people are gonna make a case to be appointed.
Right.
So, if they make a strong enough case, then I guess it's-
It's gonna be up to this board.
It's just, yeah.
Or it's gonna be up to add, to the, it's gonna be up to this board, the school committee, the water and sewer commission, and the moderator to determine if in fact they meet this criteria.
Yeah, and I think in that regard, this was something we worked out as a group, the operational knowledge. So, we didn't just have someone coming through and sort of wanting to get on it without any real background in either the CIP, the budget. We're not trying to exclude anybody, so if you see that as an exclusion, then change it. We also all agreed that the, these are appointments. So, those appointments will be done by people who have, wanna put the best people in that position. So-
I just, I just don't want people to read-
And think they don't qualify. So, I'm with you. I think it was Bill that proposed the word as, because we were arguing over the qualifications. We tried to work that out. And we agreed that it was a, it was at least a happy medium word, if that may. No, operational, operational knowledge, meaning that, you know, to me, in the discussion, it was that you would have either operational knowledge of how the DPW works or how, you know, how a capital budget works or town government works. That's what we consider, we considered operational knowledge when it came up. But if you think it's exclusionary in its, in its read, then-
I think, you know, being the fact that they're appointed and someone has something to offer, I guess they can make a case to the appointing authority, whether it's the board, town moderator, right?
Right.
So, a little bit of clarification. Planning committee consists of five members. The Board of Selectmen shall appoint one member. School committee shall appoint one member. So, does that mean the Board of Selectmen is gonna appoint a member from us or-
No. You can't sit on another board, you know, you can't be part of another board, so you'll make an appointment.
Okay.
So, somebody could, you could open up those, the candidacies. Once, if this gets approved and approved by ultimately the DAG, then the process would begin of advertising for all three, all three entities. So, the moderator could make requests for people to apply for this, this type of appointment.
Yeah, I was, I was concerned that we were restrictive, but as, as we talk it through-
Yeah, and keep in mind, this is more of a guideline too for future selectmen, that they'll look at this and say, okay, where are we, what's the guidelines that we're gonna appoint somebody? So, they'll look at operational and they'll decide that, okay, this meets the criteria of-
And then, yeah, the item that I brought up last time was the nor shall a member, spouse, partner, or immediate family hold any full-time or part-time office or employment in the town and government. And I, I felt that was all very restrictive because of the pool of volunteers that we have to fill this. And keep in mind, we're all employees, so if any of our spouse, kids, whatever, is on any other committee or board in town or it could be a, somebody volunteering at the, or doing a term at the library excludes some good talent. I wouldn't take that out if there wasn't a backdrop of protection. And if you look at item 268A, the Conflict of Interest Law, under the Mass. General Bylaws, they've got 29 sections talking about corrupt gifts and compensation and financial interests and conflict of interest. So, I, I truly believe there's more of a conflict that relates to other things than having somebody in your family on a committee. So, I, having said that, I would like that, that part struck, leave 268A in there. I think this is a, a very good warrant article. Didn't know how the advisory committee would take it. I understand there's been a lot of discussion over that item. If they're comfortable with that, I'd like to see it go. If it's a stopping point and it's gonna kill the article, I'd say we can live with it. But with the understanding that it's, I think it's a detriment to a lot of good people.
So, to be clear, you want the sentence, "All members shall comply with the Massachusetts," oh, sorry, that's a different version. You want the, the whole thing struck?
No, no. Reference to Mass. General Law 268A can stay in there, and that covers-
Okay, got it. Yes, yes. And ideally, so we, Jim set my wheels in motion. AgCom didn't, saw the original version that you saw before we took out the section that was recommended by this board. And they had a reaction to why the conflict of interest-
Well, just be clear, the board didn't recommend anything. There was discussion the other night about this. So, and there was a couple of discussions about these points. So, they got the original version as well. So, they, so they viewed it the same way you did, just to be clear.
So, on that note, I think our board is gonna pick this back up and discuss this and take what you have to say, and then we'll get into that conversation. As Jim's comments at the last meeting, when he, when he brought them up, looking at those, the details of those comments and then having a conversation, it became clear that as it was designed in the original version that you guys saw, that is something that just is completely impractical. And I thank Jim for bringing it up and making me look at it a little closer. And it wasn't just what Jim had found. It's what I found on my own in taking things that I had, you know, heard. And it, yeah, it's impractical. But I do think that members of the community would like to have the reference to the Mass. General Law 268A in it. Yes.
Yeah. And I, and I looked at the, I don't think there's any other committee or board appointed, elected that has the stringent clause, no family member.
No, and, and that was another point that I was, that I agree with you on. We were trying to do something to, to, to make sure that there was no conflict of interest. And I think we went too far because you don't want this being the document that starts that off. This, if we're gonna do something and include it in all boards and committees, then it should be done and not done in this way.
So, did you have language that-
So, I have, Bill has two versions of the original version.
So, they have three now.
And then you have three. And I brought the copy of the third and final version, which addresses what Jim just mentioned. And I can give you guys the copy if you'd like, but it's just, but it's-
It's quite simply, the, I mean, I think the board needs to determine if that is, that's the wish of the board, then it's simply, it would, it would take out that sentence that basically says, "No member shall hold any other full," I'm, I'm sorry, "nor shall a member, spouse, partner, or immediate family hold any full-time or part-time office or employment in the town government." And then I would alter the last sentence to say that all members of this committee are governed by Mass. General Law Chapter 268A Conflict of Interest Law.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you think that would work for the-
I think it works. It's a little bit more than what we have in other boards and committees, and it-
Everybody is anyways.
It isn't over the top, and so appreciate that.
They want to do what it is.
Sure. Yeah, it's got a, one slight little thing that-
I'll, I'll give you, I'll send you a revised version so you can act on it at the next meeting. So, so-
If you get it here.
I don't know if it's the same though, because it doesn't have the same, but it doesn't have the last language in it I just described. I haven't seen that part of it.
But don't we have to, isn't this going to AgCom tomorrow?
Yeah, so, so what I'd like to do is just, is just to find out what your changes are. And then I'll give you a revised version. You can act on it at your next meeting, and then we'll present it to the AgCom. That way, we're not just giving it to you tonight for the first time to see it, right?
So, you're-
Well, I think it's-
It's gonna be before the AgCom? It's not gonna be before the AgCom tomorrow?
Well, they, I don't think there's gonna be anybody that's gonna see the AgCom tomorrow anyways because of the weather. So, it's probably gonna be bounced anyways to a different meeting. So, but I, if I have your changes, I'll give you your changes as well as the changes to the, to the AgCom. So, that way, they'll both have it at the same time.
Yeah. We're me, our chairman, who brought up the biggest concerns and wants to, we wanna address those in open session. We meet tomorrow, and we meet a week from then, but you don't meet for two weeks. So, you know, that's, I would like to, I don't know where you guys stand as far as the language, whether you wanna see something, you know, firm in front of you. I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, if you have it printed, it's, it's-
I do, but it's-
David brought up a point, has Kate or legal diversity in-
Not yet. No, because I, we wanna know what the final version's gonna be, so before I would give it to Kate.
So, I think, I think relative to this, I think we're okay with taking out, "Nor shall a member, spouse, partner, or immediate family hold any full-time or part-time office or employment in the town government," and then add the reference to Massachusetts General Law Chapter-
All, all members shall be governed by the-
Members of the community should be governed by that.
And that's what's in this. But again, if, if the process has to be that, you know-
Yeah, so I think we're all-
An agreement with that? Is there, is there general consensus on that, on that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay.
Does that work for you, Sean?
Yes, I think it's-
So, I'm just, we're taking notes of these changes right now. I'll give, and once, I'll make the changes. I'll send them to you. You can, you can respond back to me if they're correct. I'll send them to, to Kate, and then we'll, and then we'll, we'll have them-
Then we'll go on to the-
We'll give them to the AgCom.
And just, I mean, sometimes we get so focused on the little shiny object, but even if this was completely silent on the Mass. General Law 268, we're all obligated to do it, whether on the committee or if it's in-
No, we, 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 no, we know that, but the, I think, given the comments that came out of AgCom and given to what, what I presented to you and then how that went to AgCom, I think we need to include it.
Okay.
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 Any other items, any other concerns of the bylaw itself or the changes to the bylaw before Sean leaves? I, there was one other discussion point, I think, that was raised relative to the issue of whether or not there was a need to do, I'll put a provision that says that they could meet as needed. And, and there's actually no language in the original version to address that, but the committee does meet as needed as it is. So, there's really nothing, there's not necessarily a reason to have that in the language.
Including emergency-
I'll defer to the council on that if she wants to add language to that effect. Do you have any thoughts on that, Kate, in terms of having language in there that says that this, this assumes that the committee meets once a year, but they could meet at other times of the year if, as, as a capital item need arises? This is a, you know, a fire truck goes down and they need to replace it immediately. They could just bring the committee together and just, and act on it.
Yeah, you'd have, you may not wanna say they only meet once a year unless, I mean, you could, you could say-
I don't think it says that.
We don't say that.
Yeah, we don't say that.
Okay, that's acceptable.
Okay, very good.
Wasn't there one more, didn't we have to change one more thing in regard to the million dollars?
So, that's a separate, that's a separate article. That's the next article?
Yes, that's Article, that's Article 18.
Oh.
That addresses that issue.
So, Article 18 is just because that has to be changed in a different location in the town bylaw.
Oh, okay. All right, okay, good.
So, Article 18, as Sean correctly points out, is that, that is the issue pertaining to the fact that if we create a provision that says that any article, any capital item that exceeds the amount of a million dol, of a million dollars or more automatically becomes its own article, you have to change language within the administrative legislative code to actually allow you to do that. So, that would have to be changed.
Okay, why does it say it's veterans under, proposed by veterans?
Article-
That's what I, that's what I-
Yeah, that, that should be corrected. That's not, that's not correct.
Oh, I'm not looking at your articles.
Oh, is that the town manager or select-
I would say selectmen on that too, Board of Selectmen. Because it's your bylaw to begin with. So, that needs to be corrected. Article 19 was the sale or swap of the Pratt School with the Housing Authority. I think the, there is no action that's been contemplated yet. In fact, there's been some initial reviews of the Pratt School and whether or not the Housing Authority wants to take that land, that land over. We have some other thoughts. We've been talking about internally about how we might deal with that. There's been a lot of discussion about creating affordable senior housing. And so, we have some thoughts we'd like to bring forward to the board at some point to get your thoughts on whether or not we can be partners in a project that could actually help achieve that. Maybe get four, four to six units out of that, out of that building for senior housing, which would be affordable. So, we'll have to look, we're gonna look at that and evaluate that a little bit, a little bit more before we move forward on that. Article 20 is to see if the town will accept this public way, Western Avenue, and that's a, from the planning board. That's a, that's a standard article that's done every year.
Can I just make a correction on it? Where it says governor, governor, governor's meadow?
Yep.
That's actually incorrect. It's supposed to be governors, G-O-V-E-N-O-R-S. It's from, that's the original, it's from the land court, from the original.
So, there's no comma?
No, no, no. There's no R in governor. It's, it was-
G-O-V-E-N-O-R.
Billy Buckley explained this to me one time, because I said, "Your sign is wrong. There's no R in governor." And he said, "Governor, G-O-V-E-N-O-R."
G-O-V-N-O-R.
That was how it is in, in the land court. That's how, at that time, they didn't spell correctly.
Okay.
So, anyway, just-
So, we'll have to correct that. I made a correction on that. So, we'll have to correct that. We made a correction on that, okay?
So, so governor's medal sign is not incorrect.
Okay.
It's historically correct, so.
But it's to accept it as a public way?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Article 21 is the hawkers and peddlers, transient vendors. This is something that we looked at last year to try and impose a new bylaw that corrected the action that the current bylaw that we have. And this is again before you, for the board, for the town to consider again.
What would, yeah, when I looked at this, what was the genesis of this?
I think the police chief.
Looked at it.
Looked at it as a clarification that we needed in our current bylaws. And.
Yeah, the police chief brought it forward initially.
The AdCom had a lot of questions on it and we weren't quite comfortable with the language ourselves. So, we pulled it from the December town meeting and recommended it to now. So, I think there's still some further tweaks.
Okay.
Do you have any recent involvement, Kate, with that?
I reviewed it, made a few changes, but I approve it as deformed. I think it was, if I'm remembering correctly, what the town currently has is two separate sections that deal with hawkers and peddlers in one and then transient vendors and something else in another. And I think the police chief's concern stemmed from little booths that move around in the Gillette Stadium and other areas, you know, on those properties. And along Route 1.
Yeah.
And that they weren't being regulated. So, it was to.
So, who's going to regulate them?
It would be the police department.
The police department?
Right.
Also, what if we have the farmer's market on the con? Would this apply to the farmers, the people who participate in the farmer's market?
Well, they'd be seeking a permit to do that. So, you, they would.
Individual vendors?
Right, they would come to our office for a permit to, to, to display.
These, so they would come under this hawkers and peddlers? Right?
Yes. I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, they should.
Yeah. I would think they would.
The one we had the most discussion about was what a transient vendor is, because hawkers and peddlers, they go to one location and they stay there.
Yeah.
But if they're moving around town, that's transient vendors.
Yeah.
That would be like a food truck?
Yeah.
All right. Article 22 is unmanned aircraft drones. And that was something that the police department had asked too for, for, to place a bylaw before the town for consideration, because it's becoming more and more common. You can buy a drone online. You can buy a drone in any store. And yet, there's, it's also considered to be a concern because of what those aircraft can, I mean, they are regulated by the FCC, by the FAA rather, but we should also have a bylaw to, that helps restrict the use of those around major crowds, things of that nature. Article 23 is Route 1 zoning. These, and I think the next several are zoning issues, issues. There's been a lot of discussion about these already. Article 24 is another zoning article. As is Article 25 and Article 26. That's it. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I do. Going back to Article 6, the CIP with the stands in the track. I don't remember seeing a presentation about that or.
Well, you can certainly have one. You can ask for one.
I'd like to, I don't know about the rest of the board, but at $1.5 million.
Sure.
You know, I have a lot of concerns about, you know, a Thanksgiving Day football game up there with one way in and one way out and potentially 2,500 people at a minimum. And I know we've had in the past close to 7,000 people at a, I'd like a heck of a lot more information about that before I, I'm comfortable leaving it on the warrant.
So, we will, we will set that up for you for your next meeting.
Mm-hmm. When is the deadline for us to take stuff off of this?
Well, we would, we would probably want the, the erection probably by the end of April, sometime maybe even before that.
I think Randy said the drop dead warrant article date for AdCom is the 25th.
25th, April 25th.
We could get this at your next two meetings. You could deal with warrant articles. It'd be great.
If you wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Budget?
Any questions on the budget?
So, are we going to have a review of the budget?
Do you want to do it right now or would you?
Not really.
Okay. So, why don't we schedule that for the April 3 meeting as well?
Yeah.
All right.
Because I, I think that warrants some time.
Fair enough.
I know we're, you know, it's almost nine o'clock now.
So, what we will do is we will schedule a meeting on the, a review of the budget and a review of the, of the capital, of both, of the full capital list as well as a presentation on the, on the, on the high school track and stands. Okay? Any other concerns or questions? All right, thank you. All right, I think we're at selectmen's update.
So, just a couple of things. One, I'd like to congratulate the girls' basketball team, winning state championship. They came close last year and they finished the deal this year. So, congratulations to Lisa Downs and the entire girls' basketball team. It was a super job. Everybody's very proud of them. So, we're up for our fourth nor'easter in the last three weeks. It's going to be a heavy wet snow again with heavy wind. Let's be diligent out there. Let's be prepared. You know, look out for your neighbors like we always do. Hopefully, this will be the last one.
He's stealing my thunder here, Mr. Chairman.
So, Jimmy, you want to talk about the talent show?
Appreciate it. Yeah, a couple of things. I wasn't going to, but yeah, no, it was, actually, it was nice. The Confor kids put on a talent show. They had 30-plus acts that were there. And it was just nice to bring 420 people to the community center, you know, the, the Orpheum. But it was nice. And I think we're going to do it every year. We're talking to maybe doing alternating twice a year, something a little bit different around the holidays. But, you know, it's just nice to see the community. And a lot of people talked about, it's kind of like going back in time when the grandparents were here and they do that in school show and kind of participate. But, you know, the Confor kids was to bring confidence to the little kids. And when you see fourth and fifth grade is going up and singing and some of the adult acts, it was pretty telling. So, it was, it was nice. The group did a nice job.
Good to see a lot of things happening there.
Yeah, no, it's bursting at the seams. Two quick items. With National Grid, I get a bunch of phone calls starting to be similar to what they were like five or six years ago when the trees were not trimmed and stuff. Can we have a National Grid rep come into our selectmen's so it doesn't have to go through town manager for, where we can have a question and answer of why we're losing it, what's happening with the, the union loop, tree trimming and all that stuff?
Update of that.
Because people are getting frustrated and we may be better or worse than other towns, but I don't know any other way to get that conduit where you can actually directly talk to a National Grid person and have your question answered.
Well, the, the question is, I get the fact that people get frustrated, but I'm not sure what, short of doing that, I mean, it's, it also, it's troubling that we would end up bringing them in here and they're turning into a punching bag. You know, because I will tell you that they've been extraordinarily helpful to us during these past several storms. And I think if we, if we're able to do that, I think it's, it's a good opportunity to answer questions that people may have. But as long as we kept it to, you know, an answer, question and answer process.
Yeah, and I think we could control it through the chair and explain this is not. And we went through this before and they actually declined because it was a hostile crowd and they just didn't want to come. And I, in hindsight, don't blame them.
Yeah.
But they have done presentations and PowerPoints where it just kind of gets lost and cable access posts it and then there's no one-on-one type thing. But I think there's some valid questions of.
Yeah.
Why.
Why it happens.
Why it happens in communications. And it is a lot better than it was.
Right.
But hearing our version versus hearing National Grid's version, I think there's, there might be some benefit to that.
But I, just from a communications perspective, they, they are very good about reaching out to us, very good about, they actually post a person right here in town during these events. So, we have one-on-one communication with those folks. One, I would ask if the board would so indulge as to actually wait until after the winter season's over so they can, because these guys are focused on trying to get every power restored and everything else back. And so, I'm thinking maybe, you know, sometime in May or April, April or May, if we could do something like that. It's supposed to wait until after, during this storm season, if you will. So, that way we can get.
I, I think having to come in and just, you know, give us, give us an update at some of the, some of the maintenance projects they've completed.
Yep.
I will tell you, these last four storms have been unique. And it's, it's been nothing that I've seen in the last 25 years.
Right.
I mean, I, I literally had buildings go down that I've never had buildings go down before.
Right.
Because of the weight of the snow, the high winds, the combination.
Right.
And it wasn't, it wasn't limbs and wires that were taking down the power. It was actually trees. You know, 20, 30 feet away from the power lines that were actually, actually falling. I mean, I, I had, I had facilities in, on one storm Norton was on emergency power for 52 hours, all the way up to Haverhill and over, which never loses power, was, was on power down the Cape, was intermittent. So, it was all up and down the eastern part of Massachusetts. So, yeah, it's frustrating to lose power. But it is New England and like I said, it's, it's not as bad as it was, to Jim's point. But it is still frustrating when you, when you lose power for.
No question.
You know, for eight hours, let alone, you know, 24 to 32 hours.
Right.
So, I, I think having, having that dialogue and by no means do we want to be accusatory because driving up and down the Mass Pike, I'll tell you, I saw power trucks from Quebec, Tennessee, Georgia.
Jersey.
New Jersey, New York. I mean, the amount of trucks that were here. If you drove into, drove by Miles Standish Park and looked at the Holiday Inn, there was, there was literally 80 bucket trucks from all over the country, just sitting there waiting for the storm. So, they are bringing in the resources.
They are, they are clearly bringing the resources and I can attest to that personally. The fire chief is here and maybe he can just give you a quick update on what we're about to see and what we have seen. Just if, if that's okay.
So, not to take away from anything that you've all said. I mean, it is very frustrating when you lose power. But when you start trying to compare us to East, like looking at Mansfield and other places that have their own power companies, and we've discussed this all the way back to 2010 when we had our real large power outages, they clear from ground to sky. That means they go about 10 feet away from their power lines and from ground to sky, they clear. We've never done that. Now, again, they did a great pruning program, National Grid did, right after that. As far as I can see, they've copped up with most of that. But the dilemmas that you brought up are, are real. We're having trees falling down versus branches. But we still have never really pushed our community to understand we need to do a pruning program that goes from ground to sky. No tunneling, no, I know that, you know, we, we do have some areas that have historical trees that we have to be concerned about. And absolutely, we need to work around those areas. But this last storm, we had 1% that were out. We had close to 20 inches of snow. Right now, the numbers did drop around seven o'clock this night, tonight. We've been all day looking at eight to 12 inches. Mima sent out a report. It looks like the storm is going a little bit more out the ocean. So, now Plymouth is going to get hit harder than we are. We're at the six to eight inches right now. But again, if it's heavy, and it's as good potential it is, we still might have some limbs come down and we have to be prepared for that. So, we put everybody on alert like we've been doing and we're prepared for it. I can easily reach out to Ann Mallie and Joe Carroll and ask them if they could put together a program, a presentation talking about their pruning program, where we are at in Foxborough, so that it's more Foxborough-driven. But I have to tell you, they are outstanding to work with. My deputies had a great experience with them while I was on vacation. And last Tuesday, they're right back to being by our side from the beginning to the end. And so, we, you know, with 1%, there was 300 and something thousand customers for National Grid out. We were still up within eight hours. I think the longest point was 10 hours on Tuesday. And then the storms before that, it was a little longer. And I think that you guys did an outstanding job making a determination to open up the shelter. And, but that's being proactive and being prepared. But I really need to support what the town managers are saying. We have a great relationship with National Grid and they've always been very, very responsive to us.
So, I, I think it's probably good in that respect to bring, and thank you, Chief, for making that, those comments. To bring them in and show, just to demonstrate to you how good a relationship we do have and how well we, we work closely on these, how close we're aligned. I don't think you had that relationship several years ago. Because clearly, the program that they have is much more proactive. And that's not just to do to anything that's happened here recently. I think just overall, they have a much more proactive relationship with all their communities. But I can tell you firsthand that it's very proactive here. So, and I think that the chief makes a very good point about the, the, the ground-to-sky clearing discussion because I can tell you, probably most people that had their power go out will say, "By all means, do it now." But then when you get to, you know, to certain times of the year, they love to see the trees as well. So, but that's the reality is, is that, you know, the less we have the prospect of a tree falling on a line, the more likely we're going, we're going to have our power sustained. So, I think that's a probably good, a very good session to have with, with them on that.
One thing, if they are going to put a Foxborough presentation together, the storm where we had the 93% of the people without power.
Yep.
I would like them to put statistics why. Because my gut feeling from driving around with a bunch of people that morning, the Saturday morning, was, it was the majority of those reasons were major trees uprooted out of the ground.
No question.
You could have the best, most bulletproof system in the world and you can't stop an 80-foot pine tree from falling on it.
And I think what's interesting is I talked to my comrades around the state and they, and I, and I said, we were up pretty much fully effect within 48 hours for the most part. We had probably a couple percent that was still out, but my and large, those are, those are the serious ones, ones that had wires rip off their houses and things of that nature that were more serious fixes. But the major, the majority of our power was restored within 48 hours, which of that, 93% lost, which was pretty significant. So, I will say, I appreciate the, the request. I, I, I just worry that it's going to, I don't want it to turn into a negative discussion about something that they've been really working hard with us to try and.
Yeah, and if it was a bashing, bashing session, there's answers to that. And I, I don't think any of us with the experience here would let that happen. But information, question and answer.
Information was good.
Ground-to-sky, what are the other towns doing for their tree clearing?
Right.
Things like that.
Really helpful.
It's helpful.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, I appreciate pushing it off to May, June, but people at that point are focusing on summer.
Yeah.
And they might not show up. If it's fresh in their minds, they'll come and answer their questions. So, I don't want to push it off too late because out of sight, out of mind there. People generally move on to something else.
You may want to just have a special meeting for that discussion? Because it could be, that could be a lengthy discussion for, just to, just to have people, you know, have questions answered.
Well, it doesn't even need to be a selectmen's meeting. It could be an informational meeting that we have.
Yeah, that's right, informational meeting.
Okay. And last item, and I'll be brief, to Dave's point about the Lisa Downs and her team, phenomenal week. I reached out to Roger Hill and Bill and they said, "Maybe address the board with this question." And I don't think it's been done before. But as you drive into Mansfield, you drive into Rentham, you see the sign that says, "State Champions." So, with the permission of this board, I'd like to grab a group of, and get the design done that says, "Home of the Foxborough High School Warriors, 2018 Girls' Basketball Championship." Price it out in fine locations along the roads coming into town because it's, I think they haven't done that since '95, so 20, 22, 23 years.
What type of a sign would it be?
If you look, if you're going one forty towards Rantham, you'll see on the right, it almost blends in, it's a green sign that says, "King Philip." It's a metal sign, metal stand. So, you know, it would have the Foxborough logo, the Warrior logo.
There's one on one oh six as well, if you go, if you're going from Foxborough into Plainville.
Yep.
There's one there as well.
Yeah.
And one, just, a just little suggestion to you is that it was interesting, it was a very, very good weekend for Foxborough in many ways. One is that the state, the girls won the state championship and on Sunday, the Jazz Ensemble won the gold medal for state competition. And we actually had somebody win the MVP as well. So, so it's, I think it's something that, you know, if you're gonna do that, you should include that kind of recognition of those groups as well. Because I think that's what, what people love to see is the, is the actual achievements that, and, because that gives people a lot of pride in the community. And I think those are
Should've given the band an escort around the county.
What's that?
Should've given the band an escort around.
There you go, that's right. But, but, you know, I think it's important that it's not just about sports. It's like, it's the achievements of the, of the school and all overall educational programs and obviously the extracurricular programs that are very, very worthy of that recognition.
So if it's okay with the board, I'll reach out to whoever I need to reach out, come back with a concept sketch and locations and a price on it.
Send this over to Jim, if you can just say, something we just saw, we just happened to see, I didn't even, wasn't aware of that until later, earlier today. So we'll just see that.
Oh, nice.
Anything else? Phil?
Okay, yeah, two, two of my things were just about those same, same items, so I'll, I'll defer on that. But earlier this morning, I was, I had the pleasure of meeting with, with Paige Duncan and who, the two of us went up to Marlboro, C.U. Marlboro this morning where the Lieutenant Governor handed out grants for the, including the town of Foxborough for the two thousand and eighteen Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Technical Assistance Program. Foxborough was successful in getting a fifteen thousand dollar grant for helping with wayfinding signs for the downtown. So my congratulations go particularly to Paige and to the Economic Development Committee, the town itself for achieving that kind of recognition and, and funding. There were a total of nineteen awards given out statewide. This particular award was, I think, one of the, one of the only ones in the state for this wayfinding type of thing. So, so we're very grateful for the, the Polito and Baker administration to provide that kind of funding for the town. So again, congratulations to Paige and thanks to Emmy Hard, who runs that program, for helping us and supporting us in that effort. Another thing that I wanted to make you aware of is that the, we received word from, from the Attorney General's office that Articles seven, ten, twelve, and thirteen were approved at the December fourth, two thousand and seventeen Foxborough Special Town Meeting and that these were bylaw and general bylaw, general bylaw and zoning amendments that were approved. So, so we have that notification, the town clerk has it, and he's been notifying other various departments that were affected by this. So those, those approvals were done and there were, there were no changes or amendments made to either one, any of those.
I'm sorry, what years did those go back to?
That was, that was the one done in December, December seventeen, December two thousand and seventeen.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking you're saying two thousand and twelve or fourteen.
No, 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 December of two thousand and seventeen, December fourth.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Two thousand and seventeen Special Town Meeting.
Are there any other Warren articles pending from this?
No, those are the only ones they had. They were bylaw amendments that required, required action by the Attorney General's office. So those, those, all four actions were approved. Okay. And the last thing I wanted to make mention of is that the, the board recalled that the Affordable Housing Trust Committee had voted to recommend fifty thousand dollars to begin for the housing authority to begin the due diligence work for the Walnut Street development. That group came before this board and the board did not take action on that request. It's required that the board actually approve that request before it actually is given to the housing authority. They, I, I did speak with the chairman, Mr. Chairman John Mitchmore, who actually is away, is away until April, and indicated that he, he wanted to make sure that the board was aware of the fact that that need still exists. They would essentially make the same presentation they made before. The, the one thing that I think that where everybody was worried about was whether or not the final report was gonna come out for the one forty study about Walnut Street intersection in particular. And that was, that did come out and the recommendation is that they have to be a lighted intersection. So we, so the question remains, you know, how, how does the board want to proceed on that? Because I believe Mr. Mitchmore is, is just trying to determine what's, what's the course of action. Do you want them to come back and make a presentation or is there any further information you need before you act?
Just for clarity, you stated that we didn't make a determination. But my recollection is they made a presentation, but then this board was told that we did not have the authority over the money to make a recommendation, so it was pulled and never, and never came back.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So I was a little irritated that it never came back and then I'm seeing in the paper. So I did go back and I looked at the meeting minutes and I looked at the bylaw and we do have authority.
The board, the board has authority. This, this board is
But when we left, you told us we didn't, they told us we didn't and it never came back again. So before it comes back, I'd like to
I think that was clarified afterwards.
Not to this board, it wasn't?
No, it wasn't. So I, I stand, I stand
So could we get the bylaw and then all the paperwork beforehand, before we get the presentation, so this
Yeah, sure. So you can, yeah, so the, so the board would have to act on it, because I think there was confusion over whether or not the committee itself, I believe the committee, the, the way it was presented originally was that the committee had the ability to act on it itself, but then it was later determined that after, after further review, that the board of Selectmen still has to act on it. So it hasn't come back to me until recently, that, that they still wanted to go forward on. So there was no further action pending at that point. So just to be clear about that. So you, you do have the ability to, to approve that.
What's the time schedule that they have for?
That's, that remains unclear to me as to when they're looking for. I think they would like to, to move forward, you know, fairly soon. So I, I just don't know when you would like to do that.
Because I, I also recall that if we didn't make a decision relatively quick, that we're gonna lose out on the land or we needed to act, that's, I think what was told to
I'm not aware of that.
No, I don't, I don't think that was
So that does, land is not in flux, it's still
Right.
available?
Not to my knowledge, it's not been made aware of me, with me.
We'll, we'll look at the schedule.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Mitchmore is not available until, I think, mid-April anyways. So, so we can maybe have a conversation with him, Mr. Chairman, to, to see how you wanna, how they want to proceed.
In, in the meantime, if you can get the, the bylaw
Yeah.
up to us.
Okay, we'll work on that. So I, it hasn't come back up again, so that's the reason why.
Okay.
There's been no further action.
Yeah, it just, it left a hollow.
Yeah, I, I apologize for that, for not getting back, but it just didn't come up again, so that's the reason why. So I think that's it, that's all I have. Sorry about
I just have a couple of quick things. This week, I did a webinar on their new law that's coming out April first, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. So by April first, all employers in Massachusetts need to notify employees anytime a new employee's hired. So I was gonna give you for your packet on April third, copies of the law and frequently asked questions. Originally, it was thought that all towns had to have a policy by April first. And obviously, just finding, you know, getting clarity on the legislation, that would have been impossible. But all it is, the town's really not required to have a policy because it's a law. We just need to provide notification to all employees. And really, it, it just creates pregnancy as more of a protected class under the MCAD. It requires employees to provide reasonable accommodations, not to, and to provide places for pregnant, for nursing mothers, to have a private space, also to make accommodations in the work schedule if an employee is pregnant. So I have some good information. I'm gonna, I knew we'd be getting late tonight, so I'll provide it to you at your April third meeting. We'll post it on board docs. It's the MCAD's law, it's question and answers on that. And by April first, we're gonna do a notification to our employees via email and we will also do a written, something on town letterhead so that we'll have it. Just wanted to notify you that that is coming down the pike. Again, that's an amendment to Massachusetts law, Mass General Law one fifty-one B. The other thing is, Bill mentioned, we've been really hard at work trying to get you some, get some clarity on collective bargaining agreements. We had a marathon session today with the DPW. I think we were five or six hours and we came to some general agreement that's gonna be written up and given to you next week. We have information for you on the fire contract later in executive session. And we're also hoping, we're working with, meeting regularly with dispatch because, as you know, the impact of regional dispatch on their union and their jobs, we've been doing some impact bargaining with them. That, I think, is all that I have.
One thing I, I wanted to follow, but one of the things we talked about at the Semerick Board meeting the other night was to have Rob come back and provide you with some further updates on what's happening. There's been quite a bit of discussion about the possibility of using the, the building in Foxborough, which so far, there has been no permanent decision made by that, by the board. But I will say that they're, we're very, very close to getting the final report on, on the viability of that, of using that, of that, that particular structure. We will be, we think, the board is gonna meet again another week or two to try and, try and firm that up and then we'll, we'll be back to you with a report on that. But it does look promising, very promising actually, that we could utilize that facility, which would then place Mansfield's facility back in their hands. The building itself would be given to the town, actually to the, to the district or for their use, so it'd be of no cost to them to, to, to acquire that. So we're working on, on those details and trying to get that figured out, but I think it's important, as I, we had a meeting just this past week on, actually yesterday, to just update everybody on finding where everything is going. And we thought it'd be a good idea to, I asked if we would, if we had Rob do some updates to every one of the communities so they all know where, where things are headed. But things are progressing actually quite nicely on, on that front.
I think the idea came up to try to do a joint meeting of all the boards of Selectmen just to update everyone at the same time or obviously not on a Selectmen's night, but every, I think every one of the boards meets on a different night for the four towns.
Right.
So they're trying to work out the logistics, but it's gonna be contingent on the feasibility study and then we're supposed to be getting some more answers on the timing of the nine, of the grant.
Right. The board, the board ultimately, but, and thank you, because we did talk about that, but ultimately the board decided it was in the best, just to have Rob go out and do individual updates. He's already done, did one in Mansfield recently because there was a question about their building. I wanted to know what the status of their building was.
Is their building still a viable option if this one
It is, it is. It remains an option until this one is no longer, until that one is actually determined.
And I think Mansfield's starting to look at reuse for that building.
Yeah.
It was in the paper.
Yeah. They're trying to look at that possibly as a senior center or something like that. So
Do you think we'll know on this building in the next week or two?
It's highly possible, Chris. I, I think we, we're just, Rob was getting very close to getting a final report. And then once that happens, we'll then sit down and, and get the, get the details, start to work out with, with, with the company who owns the building. And we'll go to the next step. So we just want to make sure that it's viable before we can move to that next step first.
I did have one more thing. We did kick off our customer service program for members of the public to provide feedback on our town departments. With the help of Amanda, we've, we have little lock boxes with a little sign to give us your compliments and your comments at every town department window. We even have one here at the concierge desk as you leave town hall. But we encourage our residents to give us your feedback after you interact with one of our town departments. We'll, we can, you can, there's a place for you to leave your contact information. It's a very brief survey and if you want us to get in touch with you, but we really do value your comments and disappointed that our press isn't here because I wanted them to, ask them if they would feature this program in an upcoming article.
We can still do that.
Yeah.
We can reach out over there.
So, thank you.
That's all we have.
Get all the action, Andrew.
Yep. Can we have a motion to exit regular session, go into executive session with the intent of not coming back into public session?
For the purposes of
For the purpose of discuss strategy relative to collective bargaining, firefighters negotiations and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations for the contract renewal with non-union personnel, Finance Director Randy Paul.
Second. Which made second, any further discussion? Do you have none? All of them favor? Benny?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Goodnight, everybody.